We're ready.
The Brazos County Commissioners Court Workshop, Budget Workshop is back in session. Ms. Payne?
Good afternoon. We are a little bit over halfway completed, but we're going to go ahead and listen to juvenile requests for capital.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Judge and Commissioners, I think I'm in precinct two.
All the cool kids are.
I'm the Executive Director of Juvenile Services. And, oh, I thought my assistant was going to stay up here, but I think she's running. As you can see on the board, we were requesting a fence that would outline our new addition to our Juvenile Services Department. Whenever the original design of the building was set up, the former chief and the design team did not include fencing around the facility. The idea, I think, at that time, maybe was to make the facility look a little less like a lockup facility. But the thing, the problem with that is, it is a lockup facility. And it is a liability when a juvenile gets out and escapes. And back in November 2024, the day after Thanksgiving, I received a call that we had a young man that escaped. And had we had a fence, I think that that would have kept him from actually getting out into the community. So therefore, it's a big liability on the county if the young man or anyone had gotten out, hurt someone, and got hurt himself. It's going to cost much more than $412,000, most likely. What I'm asking for is the fencing around the facility to, if you'll look at the picture I gave you, it, the red line around the facility that Trevor drew, as Trevor assisted with me with this, is that it goes from the Texas Avenue side where, which is our academy program, which is a fire door on that end that needs to have fencing. And then it goes all the way around by the sheriff's office to the back of the facility and over to the side where actually our employees park. And the reason why I've asked for the fencing all the way around the facility is we have three required fire doors. And on those fire doors, they have a push bar. And if a young person were to get past the doors that are operated by the control booth, and they get out those doors, they're out on the freeway. So I think it's very important that we have the fencing all the way around the facility. Right now, and I know Commissioner Nettles has come over and walked around the facility with me, on the side closest to the sheriff's department, there are four pods. That's where the kids sleep. Attached to those pods is an actual recreation area. You can walk right up to that rec area, and if for some reason a kid made some kind of contact with family and said, "I'm going to be in the rec area at a certain time," they can walk right up to that. And I just think that's very unsafe. And so I feel like it's really important that we build a fence and build it now. And so that's what I'm asking for. I met, when we had the escape, I did have a meeting with our sheriff's department, Trevor and also Bob, and just talked about some of the things that we could do to make our facility more secure. And we did come up with some other plans, but the fence was one thing that was discussed in that meeting. So I really think that we need to do it now, and the sooner the better. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, y'all certainly need a fence. The question I have is, I know jail standards has certain requirements for fences. Do y'all have those same requirements? Are y'all's?
Normally, most of our facilities, we have to have the fencing with the razor wire on the top, because otherwise, the kid's going to crawl, he's going to climb right over it, she or he. And so it is, it's a specific type of fence with a razor wire. And I think that is probably, Trevor, is that what we were looking at? Or that's what the specifications? And so it does have to have the razor wire. I know that was a little concerning, because it looks really like it is, but it is a jail. I mean, not, it's a detention center, but we do house kids that, you know, think about escaping. And, you know, this was very, this was kind of a perfect storm the day this happened. We had an outside contractor on the roof. The young man managed to get from the play yard up to an open area where there was actually no razor wire on that side, got onto the roof, and the contractor had left the gate open going down to the ground. So it was a perfect storm.
And there's razor wire where he got through now, correct?
Yeah, we've had to add more razor wire, though. We felt like that that was not, that was not sufficient. It was a play area. I think I might have showed you Commissioner Nettles when you were over there, where we added that, we were going to add that razor wire. And we've already done that. So, you know, you kind of find out some of the flaws you have when these kind of things happen, but this is not worth letting this happen. So, anything else?
Commissioners?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
The next department up is going to be Emergency Management.
Your crowd didn't show up.
They'll be here in a minute, Jason.
I'm a little disappointed in my turnout, but that's okay. I'm Jason Ware. I'm the Emergency Management Coordinator for Brazos County. What I just handed out is the UPS proposal, is uninterrupted power supply. So it's not much for us anyways. So basically, so I kind of preference this with, so the Community Emergency Operations Center for Brazos County is a unique facility, because we house Brazos County, the City of Bryan, City College Station, Texas A&amp;M University, all out of one facility. With that, we actually split all of the, most of the expenses four ways to include this UPS replacement. So even though the cost of the replacement of this UPS is a total of 68, give or take 68,000, almost $69,000, the cost for us will actually only be about 17.5, give or take some. But the current UPS was actually given to the CEOC by the City of Bryan about 15 to 20 years ago. It was something that they had taken out of one of their old facilities, said, "We've got one, y'all can have it." But the actual device, or the actual UPS, is probably in the neighborhood of about 15 to 20 years old. And so the UPS itself is the battery backup for our IT systems, our critical IT systems like our server rack that serves the CEOC during emergency activations and stuff. Anytime that facility is activated, we're probably in some kind of disaster mode, emergency activation or something. So we really need those services activated. Of course, we do have generator backup on the facility, but the UPS kicks in when we lose utility power from BTU. It, when we lose the utility services to the facility, to the time the generator kicks on, there is a gap of about a minute or so. And so the transition between utilities and generator, that minute, we actually have very little notice that it's actually taking place because of the UPS that is located in the CEOC. The funny thing about the UPS is it's not one that you can go down to Best Buy and pick up tomorrow. It has its own little room, and it's a very large system. So that's why the expense is a pretty large expense, at least when you look at my checking account. So that's why we're proposing the 17.5 to replace this. It is a quarter of the cost that is shared by the other three entities that are housed out of the CEOC. So, any other questions for me?
Commissioners? Thank you, Jason.
Donate that old battery to a museum.
It is an old device.
All right. Jason, thank you so much. Ms. Payne?
FYI, I'm not computer savvy, so. Next up is going to be the Ag Extension Office.
Always good.
Okay. Not really know where to start, but we're here to kind of discuss and, I guess, validate the request for the capital project. We've been in discussions on a couple of years for this, the need for this additional facility where we're located now. We have an estimated $50,000 worth of materials and equipment that are owned by individual clubs and program area committees that they utilize for education. The, probably the biggest concern is, these are stored currently by the volunteers, and most of it on private property offsite. As you can kind of imagine, when we transitioned, for example, in a 4-H club, these leaders, you know, their children are involved, they step up in leadership, and eventually their children graduate, somebody else steps up. Well, the transition of those assets and those, that equipment and material has to then find another place for storage. A lot of this equipment is also shared by multiple clubs. Our program area committees share equipment. So the idea behind this request is a centralized storage facility that's environmentally controlled, that's secure, and that's on location with our educational facility to make it easier on our volunteers, on our clubs, and our program area committees. It will also relinquish the need for offsite storage of a lot of our equipment, including a livestock trailer out at Road and Bridge, that can then be moved and kept in a singular location. Another challenge we run into is access to these materials and equipment after hours, especially on the weekend when clubs are having activities or we're hosting a program. We have to provide, anything that's stored away, we have to provide a code or meet them up there in order to have access to those. This would allow easier access and security for anybody that wanted to use these materials and equipment. I think the, what we've discussed is an estimate of 50,000 for the design, an estimated on construction, and we're estimating that we can get this facility built to need with room to grow for less than $300,000. I think the traffic study was grouped into this, the million-dollar ask. I can't speak to that specifically. I think it had more to do with the tax office, but we happen to share that parking lot in that area with. Two of the documents that I did give you, one was a recommendation letter from a former chairman of one of our program area committees that do own and utilize a lot of equipment for educational purposes, both youth and adult. They could really use a centralized storage facility. They have a lot of volunteers, 25 official members that do a lot of summer programs. And with a centralized storage location, we'll make it a whole lot easier. The other document is just some backup data that pertains to our 4-H program. You know, we always have to keep in mind, these are tax paid dollars that we use, but I want to just remind everybody that these tax paid dollars go directly back into investing in the community that it comes from. The youth that are involved in our 4-H programs, as you can see, all you have to do is come to one of our events. One last night isn't a great example of how great they are, the success, the success that they have. I think we estimated last year, our seniors got an estimate of $170,000 total in scholarships to go to their further education. So that's the majority of what this storage facility would benefit, is the youth, but it will also have an impact on our adult programming as well.
So now you're downgrading our, your ask for us today, instead of 150, it's for 50,000? Is that correct?
No, sir. The, I don't know what the lump would be. Maybe she could answer.
This is a request that was requested last year, that's just for rolling. The $150,000 was for the estimate to design, to build. I was told it was close to a million dollars. You have to keep in mind that there's no parking, there's no water, rent or electricity. And so I think the 300,000 is just for building, right?
No, we think the 300, it won't need water. The spaces inside will be 10 by 10. It's just going to need electricity for lighting and environmental control. No water is needed access into that building. In discussions with Bob and Mr. Went, we're estimating less than 300,000 total for the building. That does not include the parking, you know, driveway leading to it.
But in the 150, I think Commissioner Brown is more concerned about the 150,000. And that number is included in design, build, and, Charles? Please?
Just to offer, just to offer a little bit of, a little bit of history on that. The $150,000 was requested. We had no necessarily, did not have a firm number or estimate on the construction of the project. The $150,000, I think, was wrapped in for the circulation around the tax office and extension. They since, I think Project Management has that study back. I don't know what the results of that are yet. But regardless, I think these projects can be separated out. If the circulation route dictates that there's going to be a need, we could just offset the building just a little, a few more feet into the corner of that parking lot. Now, depending on the scope of what the court wants to do, Judge Peters had expressed a preference previously to being able to put a curb cut off of that cul-de-sac to be able to park trailers or something like that in there. If the court wants to pursue that, I mean, depending on the complexity of it, it can go upwards of a million dollars. I feel fairly confident that we can get the foundation, the HBAC, the I feel fairly confident that we can get the foundation, the HBAC, the building and everything for 300 or less.
Correct. And I think that's what Commissioner Brown, if I'm hoping.
Yes, sir.
We've been looking at the study and moving traffic around here. Obviously, we have some issues and we need to do that, which didn't all fall on you all. But specifically the building, so the building would be less than 300. The total request for 150, though, is for, that's what Fred is trying to drill down on.
And depending on what the court wants to do, historically, we have, historically, prior to now, prior to this year, we have usually done design in the first year, and then the second year, we would request the funds for construction, once we have the engineers or architects estimates and to go forward from there. So if the court wanted to choose that direction, then I think the 150,000 would more than cover any kind of design cost or...
We will not exceed that.
Yes, sir.
In this phase.
Engineers, architects, what have you. Unless you said, "Go forth and do good things," then we turn Bob and Trevor and them loose and we try to see how much we can get for that 150. It may exceed that a little bit for full construction and everything.
Does that answer?
Yes, that does. Y'all do a great job with the youth. Thank you for what you do. We were an FFA family, that's Father Feeds the Animals, at my house, but anyway.
Well, thank y'all.
I just wanted to make a couple of notes. We did get the study back, and I have to get Trevor to give us estimated cost of the traffic roundabout information real quick, so the court can be fully aware. Also, this is more like a outside agency request. It's a special project. You do this one, you're going to open up the doors for limited potential, North Bryan Community Center, a lot of other organizations that will be asking for buildings to be built. I just want to keep y'all in mind as well. But Trevor?
Sure. So the traffic study that we had done, that we started to look at, I'll fix that for you, Chuck. There was another project that was budgeted this year, and it was a monument sign or a marquee for the tax office. And when we met with Christie and Melissa about kind of placement of that and how it was going to get the most impact on visitors coming to the site, that's when this thing kind of snowballed into the drive-through, parking, public parking, accidents, all of these things. And so that turned into the traffic study that we had done with GLS. And we kind of went into that basically saying, hey, other than the buildings, because the buildings need to stay where they're at, what's the best solution here? And what we got back was a pretty well-developed new site plan for the site that has an estimated construction cost of about $2.7 million. We didn't get that back in time to get it into, to get it in as a FY26 budget request. I think kind of going through either the master planning process or just looking at it deeper, it would be an FY27 or future item, so. But that was the number.
Commissioners? Chad, when he goes to fiscal year 2027, you're wanting this to start sooner? Due to our...
The sooner the better.
Correct. But we need the traffic flow and be able to get in and out and get the trailer in there, because currently you cannot do that with the closed cul-de-sac and the narrow driveway through the total complex, correct?
It's tight.
Commissioners, any more questions for our county agriculture extension? Looks like Mr. Bull would like to speak. Ed, please come up.
Good afternoon, Court. I'm Ed Bull, Chief of Staff, legal officer. Ms. Payne had mentioned if the court moved forward with this, this is something similar as to unlimited potential or the North Bryan Community Center. I think what she's referencing is previously when we had the ARPA money, we looked at potentially providing buildings, brick and mortar for outside agencies. The problem is, is it's illegal for us to do so. I'm not aware of anyone asking our general counsel the legal question of whether or not we could proceed forward with this. As far as who would own it, what's the legal status as far as, you know, the agri-life, I mean, it has a different status than a traditional outside agency. So again, I'm not opining on the fly, so to speak. I just want you to be aware that there is, if she's raising that issue, it's potentially a legal issue that needs to be resolved before anything's budgeted, I would think. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for Ed? No? No, thank you, Ed. Chad, anything to follow up on?
I'm just a little confused on the, I didn't consider us an outside agency, since we're fairly heavily funded by the county. We are county employees, we do receive a paycheck from the county. Facilities are maintained by the county. This is a tradition that's gone on for a decade plus through MOU, a partnership that was established long ago. So I'm definitely not a lawyer. There may be some implications there that I'm not aware of, but this will be a county facility, just like our building that we're currently in now with our education facility. And so, I don't know. You have any supporting comments or anything?
Questions from the commissioners?
Well, no, I just wouldn't, I wouldn't have thought to compare it to some of the outside agencies like North Bryan. I mean, it's sort of a community organization that we have, you know, we've periodically funded, but in terms of them, I didn't think that was...
So there is MOU regarding, the county is supposed to support the agri-life by building by certain things, staffing, operations, but this is very specific to organizations, to 4-H, FFA, clubs. Can any other, would y'all allow any other building that we're funding, say for instance, Health for All, to be able to be stored in this building without your permission? That's what I'm getting at. We have to make sure that there are legal rights for us to do this before we can move forward. They do have a building, the county supports this building, this is very specific to outside organizations, FFA, 4-H.
You mean, the funding is specifically, is this...
The use.
The use.
The use.
The use of the building. And so I think it'd be wise for us to look at the legal.
It's not FFA.
I still think it's wise for us to look legally into it.
It's 4-H, not FFA, though.
I don't want to belabor the point by any stretch of the imagination, but extension, it was established by the Smith-Leaver Act back in the early 1900s. It's a federal program and is run down through the states. It's supported by Texas A&amp;M University, memorandum of understanding between the county and Ag Extension as to how it operates. It's contributing, we actually pay for, the county pays for employees and so forth. So it's not that we, the county provides a set amount of money to an outside agency for whatever it is that they seek forward, a particular, it's a, in my mind, and it may be just my interpretation, and I think we, it would be good for legal to look at it and to vet it all, but I don't think the county would have spent the $3 million on the facility that they built, that they reside in right now, previously, if it was not a county-supported, county-provided program. Yeah, Chapter 43 of the Texas Ag Code enables Texas counties, the commissioners' court, to employ means as appropriate, expend money as necessary to establish and conduct cooperative demonstration work, and how you can help with home economics, I mean, that's how old this building is. It hasn't been called that in years, so. Anyway, so.
Charles?
I think there's more than legal justification, we can pursue that further.
Absolutely. We will do our due diligence, work with legal, work with the fiscal year and the planning and transit and mobility through that area with the study that Trevor's working on, and we will do our best to keep it in this budget, but it may be a 2027 based on just being able to get traffic and flow in there, correct? But this court will do its best to move as fast as we can legally.
Well, for the record, we all appreciate the court and the community's support up to this point, absolutely, 100%.
Absolutely.
No matter what the court's decision is, we're going to keep moving forward, and our goal is to blow up the program, double, you know, membership and everything. We're going to keep investing in the kids, keep investing in the adult programming. We do appreciate the comments and the mindfulness that it takes to get stuff like this done. So I just want to say thanks for the opportunity, and if you don't have any more questions, then...
Commissioners?
Good.
Chad, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for all y'all do. Ms. Payne, moving on.
Next up is going to be Records Management.
Patiently waiting all day.
Good morning, I mean, good afternoon. I'm Desmond from Records Management. I'm here requesting $94,000, which is the initial cost for it, plus the extra for the year that's coming, annual subscription. I'm asking for a piece of software, it's called GovBuild. It is a highly customizable licensing and case management platform built for local government. It's easy to use, it improves service with the citizens and with everyone within the county, and reduces paperwork. The handout that you had there shows quite a few screenshots that is from the actual application when you started, where it says online forms. The online forms will transform, online, it will make online fillable forms from forms that we have that are actually used right now. So instead of them having to come in, send them by email, or maybe drop them off to us, everything will be done online, so that they can make the streamline of the process a lot easier for us and for the citizens. It's a pretty, it's pretty good coming straight out of the box, and we can use it and work with it, but it's also highly customizable for us and for our specific needs and things that we need to do, so that we can serve the citizens. It's good for permits, licensing, and a group of other things that we can use it for. Dashboards are easy to use for our people here, and it also has a dashboard that's for the citizens, so that they can come in and see things like, it's very specific to their cases and the things that they're needing or applications, so that they can look up what step is in, how far it has to go, a pay history, and it's just really customizable and very easily used by the citizens.
God, this is wonderful. I mean, we've been needing this like forever. This gets us into this century.
I agree, sir. Do y'all have any questions for me about it?
Commissioners?
Desmond, Desmond.
I'll guess.
Like anything else, just update the technology, trying to keep, catch up with the technology.
We're trying to keep us there, man. We're trying to keep us there.
Oh, Ms. Payne, Desmond, stay close.
Can you go in detail which departments will be specifically used for this software?
As of right now, I have not talked to every department, but we have Risk Management, who has like two or three things that she can use it for. I have introduced it to our Roden Bridge for all of their, for the right-of-ways and things like that, that they have to keep right now, they're keeping them on an Excel sheet, people have to come in. This will give the citizens, they can go online to see everything that they need to see without calling, without doing everything, because it'll show step by step where they are, what needs to be done, what has been done, what they owe, what they paid, just a whole history, and that history goes back for years and years and years.
So it could be compatible for all departments in the county?
It could be compatible for a whole lot of counties. I heard the Treasury Department up here earlier, speaking of taxes on the hotels and things like that, and I even reached out to them while I was here to see how we can use that. We didn't get deep into it, but it can do a lot of what they want to do.
It has the potential.
Yes, has the potential.
That's great. That's so good.
Commissioners? Ms. Payne? Desmond, thank you. I know, and that's good. I'm trying to provoke them.
I'll be fine. I'll provoke them. I mean, everything that we, I mean, pretty much, most of the, anything to do with software is coming into the 21st century, and it doesn't come cheap.
It doesn't, no.
And then, in order to provide the services in a way, document everything that now, you know, I guess with the input, with the citizen input of their document requirements and information that they need, it makes the input of the data easier, because it's already partially there, and so it just streamlines the process, and forever record keeping, we store it somewhere out there in the cloud of document keeping.
Correct, correct. The one question that was, the one question that was not asked was, this system does not sell à la carte, and most of the system that they're selling us, we will not use. And so if you look at the requests, there might be items that we might not need that we're still paying for $94,000. And so there'd be, there's a lot more research that would need to go into this software to see if it's useful.
Well, it's like the cable contract.
A lot of things. It takes us, it takes us time, and so I think...
Can we modify this to user pay, so they help pay for some of this cost?
It depends on if you go with the system or if it's in the contract, we have to look into it. But this, I'm not going to say yes. I mean, and this might not be the winning bid, and so it just depends. I do think that if we're going to more of an all-around county software, I think you need to get more than just several departments onto it, you know, during the discussion.
We need software that's multi-departmental friendly.
Because right now, we have a lot of softwares that are very specific to each department, which is, you know, our costs continue to go up.
Right.
Okay, so that's something else to look at, not to just, I'm just trying to keep the conversation going, someone's trying to ask questions. Any questions? At all?
Maybe you've been down, because maybe you've had a chance to ask the question.
There's a lot of software requests, and a lot of it's needed. But I mean, I think it's time for us to really research each software to see if it's beneficial for more than just a couple of departments, you know, reach out to all these other departments, here's the stuff, you know, someone needs to do a survey.
But these presentations aren't saying specifically this, it's giving us an idea of what's out there with the assumption that the department, in his case, he and Trevor, he and Charles, will go out there and look at what the potentials are, correct?
It would be project management and...
Project management, okay.
But yes, there's a lot of potential between all these different softwares, I just think it's time for us to do a...
Will they be taking bids to show us what they can do? No?
I think it's wise for us to do a survey regarding which department needs what, and see if we could find something that's starting to be compatible with a lot of us, not just...
More of a universal project, product.
Especially if it's fees, fines, taking money over a lot, you know, I mean, something that's more universal.
I can't help but wonder if there's not counties that have already discovered that, that we can...
I'm sure there are.
Okay, that's my spiel.
Best practices that have been done in some of the size counties with some of the size budgets or whatever.
As we're growing.
Yep, yep, we got to be proactive, anyway.
Desmond, thank you. Any party shots?
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward.
Roden Bridge. And I don't want to, I want to be open about the projects, not bother Roden Bridge is coming up here. I want us to be open about the projects, because there might be some history that the court might not know from the past, and so I'm trying to bring some of that to light.
Absolutely.
Okay. They're coming, I think Roden Bridge is coming.
I don't want to interrupt. Pratna Banerjee, County Engineer, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We have three asks this year. The herbicide truck probably was already, you know, touched on earlier in the morning, but the first one that I'm going to discuss is the equipment shed for Kathy Fleming Yard. The main need and purpose for this is basically to protect our equipment, save money, and improve readiness. What we are proposing is a new equipment shed for Kathy Fleming Yard that'll help us actually shield county-owned vehicles, machinery from sun, rain, and extreme weather. This protection will extend equipment life, reduce costly repairs... This protection will extend equipment life, reduce costly repairs, and keep machines ready for use. Over time, this investment will save taxpayer dollars while ensuring quicker and more reliable road maintenance response. It's a pretty common sense ask, you know? We've had one shed that we asked for a few years ago at the main Road and Bridge right off of 21, and we have a similar sized yard at Kathy Fleming, where we also store a lot of our machines and equipment out there, just to, you know, the ease of where we are actually geographically going at.
Where is it, Kathy Fleming Yard?
It's on...do we have an ability to like look it up on Google Maps?
Well, that's not necessary. You can just tell me the area.
North of Milliken.
It's, yeah.
Okay, north of Milliken.
It's in Princeton, one.
Will we approve that?
But there's no shed out there now? There's no...
Sorry. There's no shed out there as of today, yeah. So that's why we are asking for one. We have equipment sitting, sorry?
What kind of equipment are you storing out there right now?
Just our regular...probably Jimmy might want to elaborate on the specifics of the equipment.
Yeah, we have a few motor graders, tractors, rollers. There now is no trucks there out there.
Okay. Big equipment.
Yeah.
Okay.
Our regular bread butter type, you know, everyday equipment. So that's our first request. Second one is shed to store sand. Oh, we're on the wrong slide. Okay. That's for $185,000. The need and purpose for this is basically pretty simple, common sense, keep the sand dry for safer, you know, when we go for response in bad weather, when it's raining, I see all those kinds of response work. What we have today is it just sits out basically uncovered, and we are asking to cover a storage area for the shed to keep bridge equipment, basically sand dry and ready for ice or other slippery conditions that come across, you know, during the winter months. This will basically reduce waste. It will prevent clumping and allow faster deployment during winter weather events. And the result is basically better public safety and long-term savings in material and labor costs. And we are basically just trying to, you know, right now, it just sits out with the elements and just want to cover it up a little bit, probably a good idea.
Is that a full shed, like a building, or is it just a roof?
It'd be more like a roof.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because we would want our trucks to basically back up to it and so kind of have to keep it kind of sort of open a little bit, but right now it's really out there, you know, it's just a file.
We have dimensions on that facility?
Yeah, we...
Not yet.
Yeah, we...that's the estimate that we came up with. We have a dimension and kind of an idea of what basically we need, and that's the 185 is what we kind of sort of came up with, basically.
It's got to be tall enough for a loader to get under.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking, you have to have a height.
Yeah.
It's going to have to be a pretty decent size.
30, 40 deep and 100, 150 wide, or smaller than that?
I think it'd be smaller than that.
Yeah.
And the third one is coal mix stockpile containment wall. Basically, need and purpose is to protect the coal mix, reduce waste, and stay compliant. We are planning to build a three-sided containment wall to protect our coal mix, asphalt from erosion, contamination, and runoff. Proper storage will reduce material loss, improve crew efficiency, and ensure environmental compliance. This will, again, lower operational costs and help maintain dependable supply for road repairs year-round. It's...all three of them kind of sort of are on the same, you know, thought processes. You know, we're trying to be more efficient, you know, not be wasteful, and basically common sense type asks. The third...the fourth one is additional herbicide truck with equipment. We'll be discussing an additional personnel requirement ask later this week, and then probably I'll touch on a little more in detail about that ask at that time, if that's...
And we had a good discussion about that truck this morning.
Okay, yeah, right. That's right. Any questions?
Commissioners?
Good.
Pratna, thank you so much. Ms. Payne?
I'd like to recess for about five minutes, so we could go over...we're through with all the departmental requests. The next phase is going to be the current projects that will roll due to already being under contract, say, for instance, 101, Emmy's Office, those kind of things. I want to tell you how much is going to roll, and then I want you to prioritize. I'm asking, I'm begging for priority lists, so I could close out a couple of projects, put that in the budget, and move on to the next phase.
Perfect.
Okay, so let's take five minutes.
Five-minute recess.
Thanks.
Granted.